All right, I am reconvening to open session, the regular meeting of Fairview District 72 Board of Education. It is September 20th, 2023 at 7:03 PM. We have already established that we have a quorum. I'd like to request that all members of the public be respectful of everyone at this meeting. If you can please ensure that you have silenced your cell phones and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Thank you. All right, we're going to start to adjourn to public hearing and the tentative fiscal year 24 district budget, district learning program, transfer from educational fund to operations and maintenance capital project funds. Can I have a motion in a second to move into the public hearing?
Okay, Mr. Fair, would you want to start us off with the two financials, sorry?
Yeah, that's what I was asking for. Okay. Will the board secretary please call the roll call vote?
Yes. Diana Diakakis?
Yes.
Jacqueline Boujde?
Yes.
Raphael Kabor?
Present.
Christine Soika? Sage Philip?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Fair, will you walk us through the two financial related items? And then at the end, I will walk the board through the e-learning program that we're asking to be renewed tonight.
Sure. The first item in the transfers is regarding transferring money to pay for construction projects. Because of certain regulations, we have to first transfer money. When we're transferring money between the operating funds, so between education, operations and maintenance, transportation, there has to be a 30 day window there where we have a public hearing for that transfer. Right now, we're transferring money from the education fund to the operations and maintenance fund, and then from the operations and maintenance fund to the capital projects fund. So it's two different resolutions. It's just a mechanical thing due to ISB regulations or to school code. This is budgeted for, this is planned for. Because of fluctuating costs and fluctuations between each fund during the school year, we may come in the spring and have to transfer money in a different form or fashion. But just like we've done the last year, we'll have a resolution, we'll have notification well enough in advance, and we may need to do an amended budget at the end of the year. Right now, this transfer is simply to pay for those costs associated with the construction that we previously planned for.
No.
All right, the next item on the agenda will be the final budget presentation for FY24. Last month, we presented the tentative budget. Based on school code, we have 30 days, a 30 day window. After that, we have to have at least 30 days between the tentative budget and the final budget, where the tentative budget is on display for the community. And we do our best and common practice has been to have as few changes as possible between the tentative and the final budget. However, there were costs that came up in the last month that we wanted to pinpoint and make sure that we are right on before submitting the final budget. This is a, in the packet, there was a much more extensive budget summary, and that summary, I believe it was about 30 pages. That's something I produce every year to give a total summation of everything going on with the budget. There's also a ISB budget document that is next to impossible to read for someone that's just trying to get a summary of the information. So hopefully, the document that was included in the board packet does an easier job of that. This is looking strictly at our operating funds. So again, that's the education, the transportation, and the operations and maintenance fund. Those are the three funds for which most of our revenues and expenditures are associated. Right now, we're looking at a negative 2.3% in revenues. That's from not the budget from last year, that's from the final numbers from last year. So we're typically conservative in estimating revenues. A huge chunk of that, even though we're having a CPI increase of about 5% with our local revenues, a huge chunk of that number is an $800,000 decrease in our CPRT money. Again, that's a replacement tax on property on businesses within the district that was instituted about 30 years ago. We saw $2.8 million in that money because of so much commercial property that we had last year. This year, that's dropping now to $2 million. We had the estimates right before the board meeting last month. So that's a huge decrease for us. We're looking at about 8.5% in expenditures and increasing from last year's final numbers. Part of this is being conservative, part of this is we're seeing huge insurances going up 14.3% as a combination of insurance increases and enrollment insurance. So over the course of last month, we've had new employees coming onto our insurance plan, and that's caused a substantial increase. Based on these final numbers, we're still projecting the operating funds a $484,000 surplus, which is about 3% of that operating funds budget. We are seeing a fund balance drop from 104% to 59%. What the fund balance again is, is how much money we have in our fund balance compared to our expenditures on a yearly basis. We've been upwards of 100% for my entire 13 years here. But back when we started this project plan for the construction, our, our plan was to not borrow more than we absolutely needed. Our plan was to utilize this fund balance that we've accumulated over the last 24 years in order to pay for this project. So we earmarked a number of those funds in order to pay for this project. So that would account for the drop there down to 59.3%, and that's just a projection at this point. There's a look at our operating funds for the last five years. The FY20 through FY23 are the final numbers, not the budgeted numbers. The blue is the revenue, the red is the expenditures, and that green line across the top is the operating fund balance during the course of that time. This is a very brief summary and not the clearest right now, so I apologize on the screen. This is not what you want on a PowerPoint slide, but it is construction. The first, we wanted to give some kind of summary about construction to this point. So we're looking at the construction expenditure summary. Again, it was $26 million. We are at about a $22 million construction budget, that's gone up to 22.6, and then we're factoring other costs associated with architecture, technology, furniture, and other soft costs. On the right is the pledged amounts that we had for paying for the project. Largely, there's about 10 point, just over $10 million in working cash bonds which were issued, $5 million in debt certificates, both of which we're paying off right now. And then we have about $9.4 million in district, other district fund balance. So that's like the transfer we had tonight, that 9.4 million there. This is a list of top factors influencing the budget. There's narrative about this in the budget summary in the board packets. The COVID-19 and the ESSER funding, that's coming off the books. We still have about $100,000 left in that funding that we're utilizing for programs and learning loss. The 22 to 24 construction project, I say 24 because the fiscal year 24 is when we're spending the money. The EAV and the tax rate, we are still waiting from the county on our final EAV for the year. Typically, we get that in June, July, August. This year, they projected we're not going to get it to November. What that means is that we don't know what we're levying for the next year. We haven't got an estimate from the county about what our property costs in the district are, what our tax rate in the district is. It's delayed. That's delaying our tax receipts, so our largest source of revenue is our tax money that we get in from taxpayers. That's been delayed. So right now, we're still waiting on that, and we'll have more information for that hopefully in November. PTEL and CPI, we've, PTEL again is the limitation that if CPI goes above 5%, we still can't levy for money above 5%. We're limited to that. So CPI has been at 7%, it's been at 6.5%. We are limited to 5%. There's a little bit we get due to new property in the district, but we haven't seen a lot of that. Insurance and wellness, that's kind of a tandem component. We've talked about the insurance costs going up. We are combating that, we're reinvesting in wellness initiatives in our district. We're hoping to continue to do that. We have our collective bargaining agreement and our personnel plan, which guide a lot of our salary expenditures, our operations and maintenance and long-term plan. We've alluded to that, both Cassio and I, that after this project, we're going to put together a long-term plan with our architects in hopes of getting on a, you know, replacement cycle schedule. We have one internally, but to have a forward-facing document for the district. The need for fund balance and reserves, three years ago, we came up with fund balance policy that was about 75%. We want to use that as a target for where we want to be with regards to our fund balance. Again, we are at over 100% for a good number of years. That's not going to go down below the 60%, but we're still within range. I believe, as I referenced last month, the ISB kind of barometer for how you want to be is about 30 to 40%. So we're still above that number. The fluctuation local monies, which I just alluded to with the delay in the tax receipts, again, with the CPRT being a huge knock, the $800,000 drop is immense. And we're still waiting to find out if that's going to be a one-year blip, and if the $2 million, that number is going to be more normal. And then again, evaluating previous year trends. A lot of these line items, we look at previous year trends and see how we're going to project those forward. The next step from here, we'll submit the final budget and then file a budget with the county clerk. Next month, and this may be moved to November again, because of the delays, it's delaying our projections, it's delaying our audit and our annual financial report. So the audit work is already done, but they can't finalize the report for the board until we have the final tax rate report from the county. And our auditor will already file for an extension for us, so that's nothing we need to worry about. November will present the levy, the tentative levy, December will submit the levy, and then January will, I can't believe it says FY25 on there, but FY25 budget preparation start in January. So that's all I had with regards to the budget. Hopefully, that gave a, in the board packet again, had a much more extensive summary. But if there's any questions, please feel free.
I have a question regarding those revenue deficit minus 2.75. So, and the expenditure is eight point, how you, you think anything, I mean, more revenue is going to come to balance those?
To balance, I'm sorry, to balance, to balance what?
To, in the beginning, you chose that 2.75 deficit in revenue. That one.
Right.
And.
All the negative 2.3%?
Yes, yeah. Same time, your expenditure is going, our expenditure is going 8.5.
Yeah.
So it's a big difference, isn't it?
Sure, sure. So that's a couple of things that I understand where you're coming from. Again, the $800,000 decrease was unexpected, and we're seeing again a CPI increase of 5% with our levy. So we don't, we're not going to be able to make up that deficit somewhere. We did have, because of the CPI last year and because of the large increase in CPRT, we had a, we had a surplus, a larger than normal surplus in our operating funds. So right now, that's going down. So that's a negative 2.3% is just a drop from last year's actual monies received. The other piece of that is we're always, we always try to be conservative where we're estimating our revenues for the next year. So oftentimes, regardless of what CPI is, we'll estimate below what we think the revenue is going to be. So that, we've always been conservative of our revenues. We overestimate our expenditures and underestimate our revenues. It's common practice, and it's been tradition since before I've been here. So that's, this is the negative 2.3%. It's both a conservative estimate and kind of a, an indication that that $800,000 drop in CPRT is a big, is a big hit. But we're hoping with another year of our levy being above, or being at 5% that we're hoping that will cut some of that, that deficit.
And the district has no control over those dollars.
Correct.
You know, that is something that is not, it's factored by another outside agency. So it's not something that we've done wrong, it's not something that we could change, it's just what it is. We just have to deal with it.
Yeah, I mean, most of the dollars in accessing revenue is totally out of our control.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Fair. I will briefly talk about the renewal of the e-learning plan. So during COVID, school districts were allowed to write a proposal to be approved to have e-learning dates, which would be an event, you know, that the school was closed, whether it be weather or other reasons, where students could still have a school day, but they would be doing it remotely from home. So this plan expires September of '23. So I'm requesting that the board approve that we renew the plan. It's a three-year plan. Basically, it allows us to utilize remote learning if the need came about. Certainly, I don't foresee any reason to need that right now, but you know, it's, it's good to have the option if it became necessary. And that's what this plan allows us to do. We have made a promise with our teachers that if we were to close school at 5:00 AM on some morning, we wouldn't expect everybody to shift to remote learning. That's unfair of us to ask of them because it requires setup time and planning, and it's just not something you can just flip to within a few hours. But if we knew that there was a polar vortex and likely school was going to be closed for three days, then we would let the teachers know, we would send devices home with students if they didn't already have a device going home with them every day, and prepare ourselves to move to remote learning for a period of time. So this simply gives us the option to be able to use those days if necessary. Okay, questions?
Okay. Does anyone from the public have any questions about these topics? No. All right, can I have a motion in a second to close the public hearing? So moved.
Second.
All right, will the board secretary please call the roll call vote? Yes.
Raphael Kabor?
Yes.
Sage Philip? Jacqueline Boujde? Yes. Diana Diakakis?
Yes. All right, public hearing is closed. We will now reconvene to the regular meeting. And we will start with approval minutes of the regular enclosed meetings of August 17. Yeah, we close the public hearing at 7:18 PM. All right, approval minutes of the regular enclosed meeting of August 17th, 2023. May I have a motion in a second to approve the minutes of August 17th, 2023?
So moved.
I'll second. Okay, anyone have any comments or corrections or anything about the main? Nope, okay, perfect. Well, all those in favor of approving the minutes of August 17th, 2023, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. All right. Minutes are approved. We will move on to the approval of payments of bills. We'll have the approval, yeah, can I have a motion in a second to approve the payments of the bills in the amount of $2,726,383.49. So moved, second. All right, anyone have questions regarding the bills? All right, with the board secretary, please call the roll call vote.
Yes. Raphael Kabor?
Yes.
Sage Philip?
Yes.
Diana Diakakis?
Yes.
Jacqueline Boujde? Yes. Christine Soika?
Yes. All right. Bills have been approved. We're going to move on to Parent Teacher Association report. If there's, if we have a representative from the PTA that would like to report to the board.
Good evening. We held our first general PTA meeting last Tuesday. We had a great turnout. We were excited because it was our first general meeting to, as we held as co-presidents. Committee chairs were asked to be present at the meeting and budgets were set. We have pretty high goals this year, and we plan on accomplishing a lot of them. Stress-free fundraising has started. We asked the community to please go ahead, and Lil' Gin was last week, and I believe Chuck E. Cheese is set for October the 9th. That's exciting, you know, the little ones enjoy Chuck E. Cheese. Our next big thing is the 5K, that's for September 30th. We're having Kona Ice, I know Raphael's a big 5K guy. We have Kona Ice, and we also have a taco truck coming in for the 5K, which is set for next Saturday, September 30th. Our next executive meeting is October 10th, and the next general meeting, which we encourage all the parents in the community to come, is November the 14th. That's all. Thank you.
All right, we will move on to the school activity report. Does anyone from the board or administration have any good news to share with the district?
Hello, everyone. I'd like to share something this summer that came through that actually just happened recently was the Gwendolyn Brooks Youth Poetry Awards. One of our teachers, Ms. Tony, has students in a publishing club, and each year during that publishing club, and then also within her classes, she has students submit work to the Gwendolyn Brooks Humanities Program. In this past year, we had three winners at different grade levels. And it's many students in the Chicagoland area that submit pieces of poetry, short stories. And we had three winners, our first winner was Marion Palmer, and then her sister Anna Palmer also won at her grade level. And then Henry Bohannon, who's a graduated student in eighth grade, he won as well. And then we had three honorable mention students, Henry Downing, who's a current eighth grader, Patrick Chan, and then a graduated student Jonathan Thatch. So really exciting, they went to the Logan Center in the city, which I believe is on the University of Chicago's campus. They read their, their piece of work in front of a crowd, their parents go, and it's a really great event that they get recognized for. We can share the website as well, if you're interested in seeing those, those poems and those works. I'll make sure to share it with Dr. Whitaker. She, I think she probably already has it for Ms. Tony. She shares it with all of us every year. This is something that she does each year with her students, which is really exciting, so.
Um, today, I spent the majority of the day in classrooms giving welcome back presentations to all of our kindergarten through fourth grade students, so, and tomorrow I'll continue. So if I haven't hit your kiddo's homeroom, it'll be tomorrow. But it's just been really wonderful having kids back in the building. We reviewed our new school-wide expectations along with our school store that we're hopeful to get off the ground as well within the next couple of weeks. So it's amazing to see how well all of our students have acclimated to all of our new spaces, our classrooms, new routines. I was super impressed with their behavior and just how much joy they bring to our building and our lives every day. So it was just an awesome day spending time with them.
And it's been wonderful having our two NTDSB classrooms join our community and our building this year. It's been wonderful to see the students, some of whom are District 72 students, and some are students in other districts, and it's really nice to have them join our building and join activities and have opportunities to be with our general education peers.
Good evening, everyone. We have had our first Student Equity Advisory Committee meeting already this year. We usually will have training during the summer, but of course, you all know our building. We're kind of in a disarray, so we decided to just wait till students were back. So I'm proud to say that students, you know, met with me, we talked about our goals for this year. They're really excited to kind of get things started and get things rolling. We have also had our first parent equity advisory group meeting as well. So we are working on goals and things that we're going to run for this year as well.
Any, anybody else?
I want to just give a shout out, I like that video that they did with the glasses.
Oh, yeah.
That was, I appreciate you guys always kind of keeping it fun and, you know, something new things introduction with the kids, and that's, that was fun, that was nice.
Yeah, that was Trish, Tricia Klein's idea, and she's sort of our photographer here at the building and makes videos and takes great photos, and so we really appreciate her kind of stepping up and bringing her creative flair to things. She's really good at it, but yeah, everybody was enjoying those videos, so I'm glad you did too.
Yeah. And I'd just like to give a shout out to the admin and the staff. I was here Labor Day weekend touring the building, and they were working so hard alongside many of the construction workers. So Cindy and Jeff, I know specifically spent most of the weekend here, both the principals and ensuring that the teachers worked on the weekend to get their classroom set up, just given the circumstances. It was really nice to see everybody sort of coming together as a community, really, and it was like all hands on deck, literally. I mean, I think Jeff rode the bus home, the first day of school with my kids, because there wasn't like a bus monitor. I mean, just incredibly, the teamwork amongst everybody is just something I, I have never seen, and I'm so proud to be a part of. So thank you guys very much for, for all of that. It is, it has not gone unnoticed, I know it's been quite stressful, but we're here and we've made it, but many thanks to you all.
Thank you. And next item is our board discussion items. With the superintendent, please introduce the reports to the board.
Yes, I'd like to start out by welcoming Jack Hayes once again from Frederick Quinn Construction to our meeting. Jack's kind of a regular. We'll see if we can keep him coming here for maybe one more?
As short a time as possible, is that right?
No, 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 we always enjoy hearing from you, so thank you for being here, and I'm sure you have a good update for the, the public.
The board had, the board had an opportunity to walk around before the meeting, so they have had a chance to see some spaces firsthand.
But for the benefit of the public, if you don't mind, just a quick update.
Absolutely, thank you. So yes, as, as you indicated, it was a hectic and stress-filled weekend, leading in, Labor Day weekend, leading into the opening of classrooms. But our efforts over the last couple of months have been laser-focused on making sure that we could have students in classrooms on the first day of school. And I'm happy to say that that did happen, and students are in the classrooms, and the teachers have been fantastic, they really have been passing them in the hallways and corridors, and they've just been really delightful. But that activity would not have been possible without the efforts of Dr. Whitaker and Jeff, and the principals, and Cassio, and the staff. And so I want to echo your comments, and thank you for the efforts that were put in to get us to that point. It's, it's been a hard fight, as you know, we've had a variety of challenges getting to this point. But the project is coming along, the students are in classrooms. And I know there are some spaces that we anticipated being able to turn over, and I can say it's not without a lack of effort or care that those spaces are not available to you. We're trying to do everything we can possible to, to get those spaces completed so that we can continue to make progress and finalize this project for you. So the, the update is that the core classroom spaces are occupied. We are going to be turning over the specials, special's offices, the STEM classrooms and science rooms here, rolling into next week for curriculum night. And probably already seen that the track and the exterior landscaping has come a long way. And the remaining items to be completed, we're going to be doing the final parking lot paving over Indigenous Peoples' Day weekend and getting to the library. So we've had some additional challenges with getting some of the final pieces put together that have impacted the, the district and operations, and we, we appreciate that that has been serious. But we are endeavoring to get that completed here going into October. We have expectations of being able to turn that space over in October so that we can finish those spaces. And then we are starting next week to work our way out of the site on the south end, where we've been cohabitating with the Park District so that we can complete the, the new tennis court and basketball court area and finish up some of the site work. So that's kind of a quick summary, but any questions?
What will the library look like for curriculum night?
It's going to be pretty much, it's, it's painted on the interior, the interior walls are painted. We have some glass in the link hallway between the existing and new, so they'll be able to see into the space and see the volume of the space. And that's, that's really about where we're at right now. A lot of it's still in the, we're in the ceiling doing infrastructure work and trying to get to the point of being able to do some of the finishes. They were mobilizing some of the wall finishes into the space today, so there might be some of that up. So it's going to be, you'll be able to see the volume of the space.
Okay. Any other questions from board members? Yeah, we are disappointed that we don't have all the spaces available to our students. However, you know, we're, we're trying to remain positive, the spaces are moving along, we do see progress. You know, we're, we're kind of taking it as an opportunity to celebrate sort of ongoing milestones. So we're looking forward to the PTA 5K to really open our new fields and track, which is really exciting on the September 30th curriculum night. You know, opening those STEM labs will be fantastic, people get to see the kindergarten wing. You know, it really was a large magnitude of work that went on here between water retention and fields and the track and two additions, two separate additions to the building, as well as serious demolition and internal work. So it was an aggressive project, we knew that from the get-go. You know, like I said, it's, it's disappointing that it's not finished and ready to go, but we're close. And like I said, as long as we continue to see positive progress, that's really what's most important. We're getting there, and it's just another example of flexibility. You know, our teachers have demonstrated a lot of flexibility over the last few years. I think they're experts at this point. And so this is just another example of having to be really flexible, go with the flow. Remember the big picture, and that is that it's going to be a beautiful facility for many generations to come. And so a little bit of pain here and there to get to that point is, is well worth it from my point of view, so. Um, looking forward to having that ribbon cutting eventually. Um, you know, it will be, it will be before the first of the year. I will say that, um, but we'll look forward to just having another opportunity to bring the community together and to celebrate, um, our new spaces and this. Tremendous investment in the community. So thank you, everybody, for your. Patience and support because it has been, you know, it's been a lot for everybody. So. Any questions for Mr. Hayes?
Thanks very much.
Thank you. Next, I have the pleasure of introducing Mrs. Sabiha Patel. Sabiha is the director of the Skokie EL Parent Center. Uh, I, as a relatively new superintendent, many moons ago, um, one of the missions of our superintendent organization was to develop. A center for, uh, parents of children attending public schools in Skokie, um, who needed to learn about. This new place and how public schools in America work. And so it was sort of our, our dream and Sabiha has helped bring this to fruition many years later. She is an amazing person, which you will quickly find out here. Uh, love working with her and I'm so grateful for all that you do for our community. So. Um, she does have a 27-page slideshow. I said, no, 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 we love you, but 27 pages we're not going to make. So anyway, welcome, uh, back to Fairview. I know you've spoken with the board many a times, but this is. A relatively brand new board. Um, and so I thought it would be really good for them to hear about the good work you're doing. So, welcome.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you for having me today. And, um, this is a little bit delayed, I would say, because it's up, it's an update for the FY 23. But because we didn't have a chance to come in with your construction and whatnot, I still want you to know. What your support of the center does. So I am going to try to really go through quickly. If I'm talking too fast, forgive me. It's for your own good. So you can go home in time. And, um, so here we go. Um, the vision and mission of the ELL Parent Center. Is to educate, engage and empower. So if you see that potential in the middle, that's the individual, the family. And then we educate, we'll, we try to give them these three things, education, engagement and empowerment. And we do this through four main domains, social services, information of these, implementation. ESO and digital literacy classes, outreach advocacy and community connections and the parent mentor program. Which this year is actually called the Parents in School Program. And I'll talk a little bit about each of these four components. So the social services is, uh, it will probably look to you the biggest because, um, it actually. The ELL Parent Center started off as a welcome and educational center, but COVID came and life changed for everybody. And, um, social services became a big thing for the ELL Center. So within these social services, uh. These are the couple of things that we do, financial assistance. Now, we don't have the money to actually give to the parents, but we are the. Bridge between them and the, where the, the big, big, big piggy bank is. So we work with the Niles Township Government. We work with the Village of Skokie, Connections for Homeless. Many, many, many different charities, but we complete a lot of applications for them. We do a lot of translation, interpretation and make sure that all these families get the financial assistance they need. Laheep has been big. Laheep is the low-income heat and energy assistance program. We've done a lot of applications for those. The CCAP is a childcare assistance program. We've done a lot of those scholarships for further education. You can see anything and anywhere that your bills can come from. These families need assistance. Government has assistance in many different forms and we are the bridge between them and these resources. Uh, we also provide a lot of personal services such as understanding communication received in mail, email, texts. Uh, very often, many of these new families that have a very big language barrier, you can imagine that they speak no English. They will come to the center and just lash their phone in front of my face and say, what does this mean? So we do a lot of translation and interpretation for them because it's so overwhelming to receive these many, you know, all through email. And text and what have you. So we do a lot of helping them understand this. We also help them follow up on their immigration procedures, insurance, medical, dental, transportation. Legal issues as well. We don't have lawyers on board, but we work with the North Suburban Legal Aid, Metropolitan Family Services, and we help them place in the appropriate. With the appropriate, um, entities, uh, career guidance. So many times they will come and they will say, well, I need classes, but your times don't work for me. So we don't just say, well, we're sorry. We actually sit down and help them find the right option. Um, we've done a lot of, uh, evaluation of foreign credentials, not, we don't do the evaluation, we'll complete the applications for them. So the ELL Parent Center is actually a partner of ECE, which is the Educational Credential Services. And we are actually also on their website. So we can, um, request vouchers for our families, which is also your families. Uh, to complete these evaluations, which cost anywhere between 250 to $350. But because we are a partner with them, they will give us vouchers for your families and we will help them with that. Um. We also provide job-related support, resume prep, uh, complete online applications. We even communicate with hiring managers if needed. Um, we've done a lot of paraprofessional and substitute license applications to ISB for these parents and a lot of our parents that. Participate in the parent mentor program end up being hired by the school districts. So that's a real fun thing. Uh, we also provide a lot of community support. Many times the Niles Township or the Village of Skokie will call us and, you know, we work with them too. School related is also one of our big things. Uh, many times we get, uh, inquiries from staff to provide language support or, you know, communicate with the family. IEP meetings, um, you know, if somebody, we have a volunteer that can provide that language support. Uh, so anything and everything that's school related, even the staff can contact us and we can, you know, help out with that. So those were our social services. This is a little bit of a breakdown data for you to just see. Last year we had some 400 inquiries and this is how the breakdown looks like. 124 school-related, you know, 84 financial assistance, uh, application for paraprofessionals, about 35 personal inquiries, 64 job-related support, 45 career guidance, 80. And community support, 33. And this was how the distribution was. So 355 were parent-initiated. 77 were staff-initiated. By staff, I'm talking about staff from all the 12 schools that we work with. Um, and then 33 were community member initiated. And this is the service data. So, uh, when you see that little 72 as that very little slice, don't be disappointed because remember the others are 11 other schools. So we are comparing yourself. So, but that slice is given your, uh, demographics, it's pretty good. Um, and then these are our classes, the enrollments. We provide 10 to 11 different classes and this was our enrollment last year. This year we started two weeks ago and we have received 190 registrations. And we are on a waiting list and it's going really well. A lot. And I'll talk about which class is actually the most in a minute. Um, these are where our students come from. Um, majority come from the mid, uh, the east side, and then there's some from. South America and Latin, uh, that part of the world. Uh, but you can also see some part of Africa. We have a lot of people from Haiti this year also. Last year we had some, um, from Burma, Afghanistan, Iraq, but it's quite, you know, it varies. These are the different languages that are spoken by the students that attend our classes. Very, very diverse. And this is the child, uh, parent-child impact. Again, we're talking about D72, but then the others is 11 other schools. So, you know, just to give you an idea. And these are some pictures from our classes. As you can see, we are always, we also provide childcare. When the parents are in the classroom, uh, that's pretty cool too. Um, it's very, very, I mean, this is a very unique concept. And you guys should be very proud of it because when people ask me what I do and I explain to them, they're like, really? You, the schools actually help their parents that much?
I was just going to say, um, the center is located in District 68. Yeah. So in the, within their district office, which is off-site, it's not in a school building like our district office is. Um, they have space that the EL Parent Center has taken up residency in. Um, so there's several rooms and there's a childcare room and so it's a really great space. So just in case you were wondering.
And then on the third component that I mentioned was outreach advocacy and community connections. So these are all the different, uh, agencies or, um. Institutions that we have partnered with last year to do, bring a lot of different services. And I will just go directly to the pictures. I want to focus on Grow with Google. So we, uh, I submitted an application for, to be, for the ELL Center to become partner with the Grow with Google program. And so we are a partner of Grow with Google. So Google gives us. Scholarships to give our parents, which they can access Google career certification courses for free, the price of which is anywhere between 200 to $300. So we have received at least 18 registrations from D72 for Google career certificates. That's just pretty impressive. Um, so these are some of the pictures for our services. We've taken our students to the food pantry to make them familiar. Um, we have Tapestry 360, which is a health-related agency to come and provide us information. Uh, we had Aramark come in and do a hiring event and Aramark hires for, uh, custodial jobs, cafeteria jobs in this, as hospitals mostly, and they offer like on the spot. Offers after doing interviews. Um, it was pretty helpful for the new immigrants. Uh, D219 invites us to talk to their high school students. So this is a picture from that session. Um, UIC, University of Illinois, Chicago reached out to us to, um, coordinate a study focus group. For immigrant children, especially adolescents. And that's the picture from that. Um, Oakton has an ICAPS program for which we coordinated, um, a big info session and helped them connect with and get a spot into that program. So. All these are basically pictures for you to see. And then we did a Bloom with Books event where we give out almost 200 to 300 books. For free to the families in addition to about 50 to 60 school supply kits. So that's our, um, community connections and these are just pictures from all of that. So all of these events that I just mentioned, this is the breakdown, um, uh, for participation in these events. So D72 had a good participation, I would say. In all of them, you know, because again, you're not such a big, you know, a smaller district compared to the others. Again, we are comparing 11 schools and D72. So I would say that's quite. A good slice. And then the parent mentor program. So this was for last year. Um, we had four parent mentors and one coordinator initially recruited. But life happens and adverse personal circumstances caused three of them to drop from the program. One parent mentor and one coordinator finished, completed the program and we were, um, able to spend $3,000 from the grant that we received. On their stipends and pay. This year we are doing the Parents in School Program entirely. Between the schools and the center. We do not have a grant. We are trying to make it work between the center budget and maybe some, um, extra support from you. Um, but that, that it's, it, I've already received. More than 11 registrations from your district interest forms and we are hoping that it's going to be a very good year for Parents in School Program. So, um, I promised I wouldn't go all the way, but I want to, you know, show you some pictures from the la- last year's parent trainings. That took place at the library, the graduation event. There's Principal Colleen Larkin with her parent mentor. Presenting the certificate. And that's my presentation. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. Please, board members.
I have a question. Um, at the PTA meeting, we were also discussing how to reach. We have a lot of. People that come to our, that don't really speak English. How do we, we want to connect with them and get them a part of our parties or. You know, volunteer events and things like that. Do you have any tips, um, that you've seen that's worked in the past? For PTA?
Yeah, we try to inform them about that. Again, remember that's a new concept, just as this. Many times when we try to reach parents regarding the services, they actually think we're scammers. Because they think, how can you provide, who, who does that in my country? Like, you know, if you're new to the country especially, like, why would you do that for parents? It's enough that you're giving our children an education. So the PTA also is a unique concept for them, but we try to, we really do try to talk about it in our, during our classes. But if that's something, there's something specific, we are happy to touch base with your school's parents and then, you know, send them the PTA's way. Happy to do that for you.
This program is just for the students, parents or everybody?
So the parents and the immediate family members, anybody that is immediately connected to the student, because the whole philosophy is that the student will be benefited in the end if the family is supported. Well-supported families will support their students.
Just with that same district.
Right. So District 72, 7, 73, 73.5, 68 and 219. We are actually. All of these districts, all of the districts in Skokie, with the exception of 69, they have a separate set of services for their families.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Kind of related. How are, how are community members finding you or how are you finding them? How, what's the connection that you're seeing as most successful or? In general?
So I think the schools send them our way. So most, uh, even 72 has on their registration form, thanks to Patrick. He has, I believe their, uh, ca- there's a permission. Option can we, the schools share their information, contact information with us? And if they've clicked yes, then we get their contact and we reach out to them. So, right. And then the school district is always the first one to send them our way when they find that a new family needs help. But we have a website and the Village of Skokie lists us. So it's, but yes, you're right. Sometimes it's hard for people that have a language barrier to actually find us unless somebody takes them by the hand.
Yeah, referral or recommendation, things like that.
Right, right.
And then I know you mentioned something about there was a, a grant that wasn't awarded. Uh, do you do fundraisers? Were those things listed?
Um, so no, we don't do fundraisers. All the budget comes from the support from the districts itself. Um, and that would be the accounting part. I'm, I'm just given a budget to work with. That was a separate budget, uh, given by the Parent Engagement Institute. That in turn receives it from ISB, but the parent, the PEI is the one who makes a decision on how to give the grant. Um, they did, they did have a grant, but it wasn't equitable this year for all of the schools that we were serving. And so the governing board decided that if it's not the same for all schools, then we won't take part in it, which I appreciate very much that they were being very fair.
Thank you.
So the, the funding formula is based on a per pupil count. So there's a certain, you know, we have 700 students. I, I don't know the dollar amount off the top of my head, but. That's how it's funded. So 219 has a big chunk of that because they have so many students. Um, so we, we fund the center. Um, we will fund the parent mentor program this year, um, out of our own pockets and Sabiha is very proud. Um, and she won't, uh, pat herself on the back, but. Um, when we identified that the parent mentor program, the way it was being run this year was something that we didn't feel was, was fair or equitable to our families. Um, she said. I'll do it. We'll run our own program and she took it on and we're, we're going to do it. And I think it's going to be a better program because of it.
And I hope I'm going to survive. Yes.
No, she's going to do a great job with it, but it was the right thing to do. So.
I, I feel like we will own it. The schools and the center will own it instead of, because earlier the way it was run was we were given certain set of rules to follow and we just had to follow those rules. But this year it's between the schools and the centers. So we, we are proud to, you know, co-own. Any other questions for me?
Yes, thank you so much for being here. We'll look forward to an update maybe a year from now.
Absolutely.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay. Yes, yes. Thank you so much. Absolutely. Okay, next up. Board policy time. Come on, audience. Get with us here. Aren't you excited? Um, so, uh, just keeping an eye on the time. Um, we have had a pretty long meeting so far. We have a lot to still get through. Um, this is the first reading of the board policies up for review. Um, at this point, really all we're asking board members to do is to review the policies at your convenience. Be prepared at our next meeting to talk through any questions that you have. Um, there's really not any substantial changes to these policies. So nothing that I'm jumping out, you know, and saying, gosh, pay attention to this one. This is a big change. We really need to think about this. It's, um, pretty routine types of changes. Um, but we will come back next month and that's when the board will be asked to approve the policy. So any questions between now and then? Um, or concerns we should be talking about, um, at the next meeting. So I don't want to spend too much time on it, if that's okay with the rest of the group. Okay. Okay, great. Um, moving on to the superintendent report for September. Um, we've hit many highlights. Um, I will mention, um, that the. Um, board participated in training on the topic of collective bargaining. Our teacher's contract expires in June of 24. So we're looking forward to having those conversations with our teachers and working through, coming up with a really fair contract that all of us can, can feel good about. So that process is starting. Been working and looking, really looking forward to the PTA five K. It's an awesome event. If you haven't been to it, please join us. It's really fun. You don't have to be a runner. People run, they walk, they push strollers, they bike ride, you name it, anything goes. So please come out. It's really a great community-building offense for everybody. We've been planning our staff development for the year. So in this district, with our Monday calendar, we do try to plan out a whole year's worth of staff development activities because a lot of times those take time to set up, bring in a consultant, prepare for. So that's one important task that we undertake at the very beginning of the year with our staff. We're planning the October Institute Day, which will be primarily dedicated to math training, the new math program that we are implementing this year. We also provide for our staff and expect that all teachers will be trained in CPR, AED, and the prevention of choking. We feel that it's very important that every adult in the building be prepared and ready to jump in if we have an emergency, whether it be an adult or a student. So we'll be coupling that training with the math trainings. So we'll really, you know, have a full, full institute day in October. But I think it's good for you all to know the types of things that we're doing on those institute days and those staff development days. Construction, we've heard enough about that. But that is still occupying a tremendous amount of all of our, all of our days. And transitioning teachers into their spaces if they're not already in their spaces. So, you know, kind of seeing that progress, like I said, is pretty exciting. And then when students and families return to us and school starts, you know, that always, you know, there are always things that arise. So, you know, working through, you know, sensitive student and family issues. That's just one thing that comes with the new school year. Everybody's back together again and, and we get together and start to try to problem solve. So any questions for me about the report? Okay, thank you.
All right. Next item is our board committees and representatives. We're gonna start with the Educational Technology Committee. Miss Soika, can you provide us with the report?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. So we had our first meeting in August, at the end of August. It was very exciting. As we were discussing the preparation for the opening of school institute day plans. As Dr. Whittaker mentioned, the Monday calendar, building wide expectations. We got technology updates from, from Patrick, building updates from both Colleen and Mike. Mostly it's relates to building wide expectations and I think the new reward system. My son is already talking about the points that he's getting. So that's exciting. And then as well as the e-learning plan that we reviewed today, so.
All right, Finance Committee. Yeah, yeah. Saj, do you want to give us a little bit of an update?
Yes, we met in the beginning, in the beginning of this, this month, I believe, so. Not remember it properly, but we went through some budget thing about the financial thing and the insurance and all those packages and all. That's it.
All right, the Adv. Representative Raphael, any updates?
I don't have an update for, for this previous month. There was a, a session that they did yesterday. It wasn't a virtual one. It was in person. I wasn't able to attend. But I've signed up for the annual kickoff that's happening, October sixth, I think. I'll be going to that. So I'll be able to provide more updates in our next board meeting.
I was not able to attend it and we aren't able to attend October sixth because that's our institute day. So Raphael will have to cover the bases for us. So thank you.
All right. And to DSC, Jackie, were you able to attend the last meeting?
No, I was, I wasn't able to attend, but I am going to the ribbon cutting ceremony, October third. They're gonna have, they were under renovation and I'm excited to tour and see the building then. So that is some upcoming news for NC DSC.
And PTA Representative Christine, do you have any updates as well?
Nothing more to add, I think, from Sylvia, aside from it was a great turnout, like she had mentioned. It was my first PTA meeting as a parent as well. So lots of exciting things to come this year. Even though we had a lot of folks in the room, we still need a lot of volunteers. So as Colleen said, please tell your friends as well and rally up whoever we can. We have some exciting and ambitious goals and could use some help, so.
All right, we are going to move on to Freedom of Information Act requests. I can report that there were two Freedom of Information Acts received since the last board meeting and they were responded to as required. Next on the agenda is information item and correspondence. We have one submission for information items and correspondence. Jackie, could you please give us a summary of this submission?
Sure. We received one item from bookkeeper Jude Delashaw thanking the board for the beautiful flowers and well wishes sent to her. She said it helped brighten each day.
All right, we'll move on to public comment. At this time, I'd like to invite members of the audience to address the board in public comment. If you wish to address the board, please come to the microphone and state your name. A three-minute time limit will be set. The board secretary will keep the time. And there were also no online comments as well. Okay, no. All right, we are going to move on to our action items. Can I have a motion in a second to adopt the fiscal year 2024 board district budget?
So moved.
A second.
Secretary, would please call, roll call vote?
Yes. Saj Phillip?
Yes.
Christine Soika?
Yes.
Raphael Kabor?
Yes.
Jacqueline Boujde?
Yes.
Diana Diakakis?
Yeah.
Great. May I have a motion in a second to approve the renewal of the district e-learning program?
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, will the board secretary please call the roll call vote?
Yes. Jacqueline Boujde, yes. Raphael Kabor?
Yes.
Saj Phillip?
Yes.
Christine Soika?
Yes.
Diana Diakakis?
Yes.
May I have a motion in a second to adopt the resolution transfer from the educational fund to the operations and maintenance capital project funds? So moved. I'll second. Secretary, please call, roll call vote?
Diana Diakakis. Jacqueline Boujde, yes. Raphael Kabor?
Yes.
Saj Phillip?
Yes.
Christine Soika?
Yes.
Two more. Adopt, may I have a motion in a second to adopt the resolution authorizing transfer from the operations and maintenance fund to the capital project funds?
So moved.
A second.
Okay, secretary, please call, roll call vote?
Christine Soika?
Yes.
Raphael Kabor?
Yes.
Diana Diakakis? Saj Phillip?
Yes.
Jacqueline Boujde?
Yes.
All right, last one. May I have a motion in a second to approve the release of closed session minutes of January eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, March twenty-second, twenty twenty-three, May tenth, twenty twenty-three, and May seventeenth, twenty twenty-three?
So moved.
A second.
This is a repeat from last month. I just want to point that out. Last month, we did not call for a motion in a second. We voted, but that's not correct. So that's why we had to replace it on this agenda. And we're officially approving, approving it properly this month.
Will you please call the roll call vote?
Yes. Raphael Kabor?
Yes.
Diana Diakakis?
Yes.
Christine Soika?
Yes.
Saj Phillip?
Yes.
Jacqueline Boujde?
Yes.
So I just want to make sure before we move on, Mr. Fair, when she read off the two resolutions, were they read off properly according to your, okay? Okay, all right. Thank you. Okay, okay. I just want to, these are very important and time-sensitive, so I just want to make sure that we did it properly, so. Yes. Okay, okay. Just being extra safe. Sorry about that.
All right, moving along, items for future consideration. Does anybody have any items they'd like to discuss next month? Okay. May I have a motion in a second to adjourn the regular meeting of the Fairview Board of Education at eight oh three PM?
So moved.
A second.
All right, will the board secretary please call, roll call vote?
Diana Diakakis?
Yes.
Jacqueline Boujde?
Yes.
Raphael Kabor?
Yes.
Saj Phillip?
Yes.
Christine Soika?
Yes.
All right, meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.